Give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Oh heavenly Father, we come to you today just thanking you, thanking you for what you've done in our city, and thanking you for what you're about to do. Lord, we ask as we go through this meeting that we make decisions that are pleasing to you. And Lord, we ask that you bless each and every person in Topeka, Lord. Keep our city safe from all hurt, harm, and danger, and continue to put your head of protection around our officers and our firefighters and all of our employees and just everyone in Topeka. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation this evening for Fire Prevention Week, and I have up here joining me Fire Marshal Michael Martin, Inspector Michelle Conway, Inspector Dorian Branch, Inspector Thomas Rodman, and Chief Bailey. We will read a proclamation whereas the City of Topeka, Kansas is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas the City of Topeka Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month," effectively serves to remind us to stay vigilant in protecting our homes and families. Now therefore, I, Larry Wolgass, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby proclaim October 5 to 11, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week. Fire Marshal Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager. I do want to take this opportunity to thank you for this proclamation, and on behalf of Fire Chief Bailey and the men and women of the Topeka Fire Department, we graciously accept. As you heard in the proclamation, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month." That is the theme this year, and the Topeka Fire Department is committed to that through our ongoing smoke alarm installation program. I want to remind everybody in our community that if you do not have a smoke alarm in your residence, to contact the Topeka Fire Department, and we will install one in your residence for free. You can get that application by going to our website at www.topeka.org/tfd, or calling our administrative offices at (368) 4000. I would also like to remind everybody that as Fire Prevention Week comes to an end on the 11th, we have our annual Topeka Fallen Firefighters Memorial Ceremony and Open House. This will take place at our administrative offices located at 324 Southeast Jefferson. The memorial ceremony itself will take place at noon, and the open house will begin at 1:00 and run to 4:00 p.m. This is an excellent opportunity for the citizens of the City of Topeka to come out and see your Topeka Fire Department up close in a non-emergency setting. We'll have food and drink provided by the International Association of Firefighters Local 83, and it's going to be a fun community event for everybody, and I invite all of you here, and I hope that our entire community will come out and enjoy the event. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, Mr. City Manager, if you could introduce that.
Thank you, Your Honor. We are going to have a presentation on the Special Assistance in Fire Emergencies, the SAFE program, and I would like to ask Fire Marshal Martin to step up and make that presentation. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. City Manager, I want to thank you for continuing to let me speak to you today. The Topeka Fire Department is dedicated to saving lives and protecting property, Your Excellency's in leadership in fire, rescue, emergency medical response, fire prevention, and public education. We were presented with a question about what our community, what our fire department is doing to assist those among us, Americans with disabilities among us, in the event of a fire emergency. And we started really looking at it to see what we had available, and in our community we really saw we had a program where we gave somebody a sticker and they put it on an interior door in the residence, and if there was an emergency and firefighter searched the house, we came across that, then we knew that there was somebody who may have some special assistance needed. And we looked at that program, and we thought that we really wanted to do better for the citizens in the City of Topeka, and we wanted to come up with a way that we could really positively impact those people in our community who were at greatest risk. And so what we did is we came up with the SAFE program, and that is Special Assistance in Fire Emergencies. SAFE is a Topeka Fire Department initiative designed at identifying those in our community who require special assistance. So, a person with disabilities, for instance, we want to be able to have that information before we leave the fire station. So, what I want to make clear on this program, what it is and what it isn't. We're wanting that information, and we're wanting to register people voluntarily who want to participate in this program, but this doesn't take the place of a good fire safety program. Everybody, it's on us to make sure that we have a good fire escape plan in our residence, that we do have working smoke alarms, that we practice and participate in fire drills to make sure we can get out. But we want to think about those individuals who may need special assistance, who have a disability and that may require some of that assistance. And we want to get that information to our responding companies before they get there. So, who are we trying to help? Who's going to benefit with this program? Like I said, we're looking at the people who are at the greatest need. We're looking for those with disabilities that are in a single-family setting or in an apartment that may not have the support system of a nursing home or something along those lines where those people are going to be identified and accounted for if there's a fire emergency. We're looking at those people who are, maybe have mobility issues or hearing or visual impairments that may make it difficult if they need to get out of the house quickly. I think if we look, I know in my life, I've come across instances where you've been in somebody's house, a loved one's house, or a friend, and you thought, God forbid, there would ever be a fire here. How are those people going to get out? And I know in my own life, in 2009, my wife and I were in a very serious motorcycle accident, and my wife was bedridden for almost two months, a year before she was actually up and really mobile again. And every time I left the house, I thought to myself, you know, God forbid, if something happened, you know? And if I could have had the peace of mind that knowing those emergency responders would at least have known that somebody was in my residence that may need help, I think that would have given me a lot of peace of mind, just to have that information. So that's who we're aiming this at. We're aiming at those individuals in our community with disabilities that could receive the greatest impact from this. How are we going to get this out to the community? How are we going to make sure that people sign up for this program and that we can affect it? We're going to join up with our community partners. We're going to get this information out to the hospitals, we're going to get it to Vallejo, we're going to get it to the NIA's, the NA's, we're going to get it to the American Red Cross. Anybody who comes in contact with individuals with disabilities who, in the event of a fire emergency, may not be able to get themselves out quickly, we're going to get that to them and get that information back to us. Sorry, I get a little ahead of myself. One of the things we're going to need to kick off this program, probably one of the things I'm most excited about, is we're going to have a SAFE walk. And what we're going to do is we've teamed up with the American Red Cross, we've teamed up with Safe Streets, we've teamed up with the Community Resource Council, and we're going to go to the High Crest West neighborhood on October 25th, and we're going to go through that community, and we're just simply going to get a bunch of individuals, and we're going to walk through there. We're going to install smoke alarms in people's houses who need it. We're going to give information about fire safety. We're going to help those individuals plan and create fire escape plans. We're going to really go out there and just have a good community contact. Our goal in this is to just have a one-on-one with our community. It may not even be fire issues that we be able to help them with. We may be able to get our community action team involved. We may be able to get our crisis intervention team from the Topeka Police Department involved. We want to have a good contact with our community to see what we as a city and what we as a fire department can do to assist the citizens of Topeka. And so we've chosen this area, and all of you are invited to participate with us, and I'll be sending you personal invitations detailing exactly what we're going to do and when on the 25th of October. The main route for registering for this program is going to be through our website, www.topeka.org/tfd, and there'll be a SAFE link on there, and people will be able to answer just some simple questions, their name, address, type of disability that they have, whether they utilize a wheelchair, whether they're bedridden, all that information that we would like to have before we get to a fire scene. And again, this is not something that is replacing a good fire escape plan. This is supplementing to it. We want to make sure that responders, before they arrive on the scene, know that they may have to provide added assistance. We're going to take all this information in, and we're going to review it, and we're going to, in some instances, we'll just be able to register somebody into the program directly. In some instances, we may see a need to actually go out and have a home visit and look and see what their situation is, what the disability is, and see what we need to do to actually pre-plan that event. So if there is an emergency, we'll know upfront exactly what we need to do. What we're also going to do is, we're not going to abandon the program where we place stickers. If you notice the packets I sent around, we still have a sticker, and we're going to ask those people to place that on their sleeping area in their house. Where also included in that packet is a smoke alarm application, and included in that packet as well is the instructions to create a fire escape plan. So, we want to make sure, information is the key here. We want the people of the community to have the information on how they can get out, and we want to have the information on how we can assist them to do so. Once we've gathered all this information, we're going to put it directly into our 911 database. So, as soon as a call comes in, the dispatcher's going to see immediately that this is a SAFE participant. So, for instance, if we were dispatched to 324 Southeast Jefferson, the dispatcher would type in that address, and immediately it would flash on the screen that this is a SAFE participant. When they dispatch our fire crews, they'll be able to alert them immediately that this is a SAFE participant house. The crews, when they're dispatched to fires, they get what's called a rip-and-run sheet, and basically it has general information on there. Most of it is reinforcing the address. If it's a business, it may give Knox Box locations or different information like that. We're going to take all that information that we collected, and we're going to put some detailed information on that particular rip-and-run sheet. So as the company leaves, they're going to have information stating that when they get to this address, if there does happen to be an incident, that they will know in advance that there may be somebody requiring some special assistance. And again, fire safety depends on you. This entire program is based on information, like I stated before, information to the public and information to us. We still want to make sure that there are working smoke alarms in the house. We want to make sure that a good fire safety plan exists. We want to make sure that if you do have a caregiver in your home, that you're practicing that fire escape plan with your caregiver. And we want to make sure that the fire department has all the information necessary, so in the event of emergency, we'll know firsthand right away before we get to the scene that we may need to help. And basically, that gets us back to where we started. The Topeka Fire Department is committed to saving lives and protecting property by providing excellence in leadership in fire, rescue, emergency medical response, fire prevention, and public education. We really feel excited about this program, that we can make a positive impact in the community. We're looking forward to getting it going, and I stand before you to take any questions that you may have about it.
Are there questions for the Fire Marshal? Mrs. Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is awesome. Mike, how will you handle the high rises where a lot of the elderly live?
This is just based on information, so we're going to take that information and we're going to enter it in. If we're talking about an assisted living or a nursing home, those places already have fire escape plans. They already have accountability in place, so that they'll know when we get there, they'll tell us which places we need to go to and who's in it. We're aiming this more at the single-family dwelling. We want to get those people who don't have that support system. And again, it's not a replacement for an escape plan. It just gives the fire department that extra added information, so when we get there, we know we may have to plan for something more.
Okay. I think this is awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Councilman Brown.
I was just looking at what you have here for the home escape plan. Is that available online already?
Is it what?
Is that available already online?
Yeah, that's actually, the fire department participates in the NFPA, and that's from the NFPA website, so it's information that's out there. We're just getting it to the individuals as they sign up. And that's information when we go out to the High Crest West area, that we're going to have that information available. It's all about people practicing planning and implementing a fire escape and having those working smoke alarms to make sure that we have our first line of defense in place.
I think it's great that you've got a proactive program. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hiller.
I think this is exciting, too. I have a couple of questions. What is, where do you expect the little stickers would go?
What those are intended for is the primary sleeping area of a person with a disability. You'd put those at or near floor level, so as a firefighter, say, crawls into the residence, that reflective sticker would be right there, and they'd be able to see it. It's just another tool that reinforces that somebody in that area will need some special assistance.
Okay. And the other question I had, if I may, is, is there a system in here, you know, sometimes people change apartments, they move out, time passes.
Absolutely.
Is this just, are you going to tell people they need to renew a certain frequency or something?
That's a very good question, Councilwoman. Yes, this will be done on a yearly basis. So we're, this is very much a living and breathing program, and we don't want it to be a one-time thing where we go out and collect a lot of names and it's in there and it gets stagnant. We want this to be an interaction with the community. Like I said about the SAFE walks, this is something we want to try and duplicate. We want to get out into the community and do. So, we're very excited about getting this program, and like I said, a living, breathing program that's going to provide us feedback, and the community's going to have to constantly come through and, once a year, renew the program, and it'll give us an opportunity to see what we have out there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Marshal Martin, and this is an important program. Good luck. I know you have our support. Hope it goes very well, and thank you for all the other inspectors and chief for participating tonight in the proclamation.
Thank you.
We will then proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wolgass.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Ortiz.
Everhart.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Man Speaker.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
And Harmon.
Are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes. We have two resolutions that will be under action items. They're for special events. The first one is a special event known as the Rotary Oktoberfest, and the second one is for the Arts Oktoberfest.
Councilmembers, if there are no objections, we will add those to the agenda as action items C and D. We have copies if there are no objections. All right? And also, to announce that there is an executive session that will follow our meeting this evening. And we will proceed with the consent agenda if the clerk will read.
A is minutes of the regular meeting of September 23, 2014. There is one open after midnight license for Last Pocket located at 5009 Southwest 29th Street.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have heard the consent agenda. What is your pleasure? Mrs. Ortiz moves to approve. Miss De La Isla seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine, having voted yes, consent agenda is approved. We'll proceed with the action items. The first is a disposal of property.
A is approval of real estate report for disposal of real property located at 630 Northwest Topeka Boulevard, and specifically authorizing Mayor Larry E. Wolgass to execute all documents necessary to dispose of the property.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. This property has been reviewed by the department heads, and we are supportive of that of this property being disposed in the manner of being recommended. I'd like to ask Mr. Bob Kennedy with the Engineering Department to step forward and provide specific information on this transaction.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, sir. This is property that was acquired when we replaced the Topeka Bridge. It was acquired as right-of-way, along with a lot of other properties out there. It is actually excess to our needs. We don't really need it for the right-of-way, and it's been run through the departments, and no one else sees a need for it either. It came to us because we were approached by the Rescue Mission as a part of their plan for their childcare center they're developing. They didn't have enough land for the building, and basically, most of this tract would end up being a fenced-in area for the kids. And so we took a look at it and found that it was surplus, and so we're offering it up and seeking authorization from you all today to do that.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kennedy? Thank you. Mr. De La Isla?
Before in the placeholder, I think the vote is approved.
Yes, Mrs. De La Isla moves to approve the disposal. Deputy Mayor Everhart seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine, having voted yes, the disposal of property action is approved. We go to item B, applications.
We have one application for Walmart located at 2630 Southeast California Avenue for a cereal malt beverage license, and staff is asking for approval.
Thank you. You heard the background, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I would move to approve.
Deputy Mayor has moved to approve. Mrs. Ortiz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have 10 yes.
Ten, having voted yes, the license is approved. I'd like to take a moment to introduce Michael Hoskins. If you would stand, please. This is the new manager of the Walmart store, and importantly, it opens tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. So you have a license, malt beverage license, you can start selling at 7:00 a.m. We like to keep things in order and glad to help.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Next, we will proceed with item C, one of the items we added.
C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember TJ Brown approving a special event known as Rotary Oktoberfest.
Mr. Brown, introduce that.
Yes, this is an event that would take place in the 800 block of North Kansas Avenue, and I would move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved to approve the special event resolution. Miss De La Isla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have 10 yes.
Ten, having voted yes, the special event is approved. We go to item D, another special event.
D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember TJ Brown approving a special event known as Arts Oktoberfest.
Mr. Brown.
Arts Oktoberfest is a special event in the Oto District will be in the 800 block of North Kansas Avenue on October 12th, and I would move for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Brown moves to approve. Deputy Mayor Everhart, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have 10 yes.
Ten, having voted yes, the special event is approved. That completes our action items this evening. We proceed to the non-action items. First is a discussion on the proposed utility rate increase. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second of the discussions that we are bringing forward to this body. I think the last conversation was quite good, and we identified the challenges and the needs that existed in terms of the utility rate requirements. I also thought that there was some very good conversation in terms of what people thought was a good approach and not. What we have attempted to do since then was to address some of the information that was brought forward. Mr. Gerber is going to walk through some of that information, and it is our hope that at the end of this session, that we're able to bring forward a specific recommendation for a rate increase. And I just feel I'm obligated to say, we know this isn't easy. This is something that not just this community, but all communities around the country have struggled with, especially coming out of a very difficult economic time, and a lot of maintenance issues and other types of costs have been deferred for a very long time, so we're playing some catch-up. What we've attempted to do is to bring forward a rate increase which allows us to address some of the issues from the rate increase. We're also committed to continue to look at internal operation costs so that we can reduce the cost of operations and seek to make sure that we don't transfer this, you know, fully onto the taxpayer. So, with your permission, I'd ask Mr. Gerber to present.
Mr. Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, thank you. It's really the night of brief staff comments, so I will try to follow suit and just maybe do a recap of where we're at, where we might be headed, and then stand for questions after that. We will have the prezi that we did last week available to pull up. Suzie can pull that up with any of the slides you might have questions on from last time or something sparks your interest this time. We do have one new item prepared tonight, which I'll walk through after, again, after a couple of brief comments here, just in terms of where we've been. Everybody remembers, but it's always helpful to recap those things. We started with a series of meetings with our rate users, industrial customers, commercial customers, two residential meetings. Along each of those, throughout that process, we've tweaked our proposal, and then finally, that proposal came to the council last week for discussion and moving forward. In addition to that, there's been other ideas in the interim that have been floated, which we've tried to evaluate and address, and can speak in greater detail tonight if you'd like, but those include the potential of maybe just a one-year increase. Everybody read today, and I've got some feedback from the council about the possibility of increasing the out-of-city fee on users. So, I promised, again, no cat jokes, but again, there's just, there's tons of ways to skin this cat. You can do it in any way imaginable, and so that's part of what this discussion has been about. The key, I think, though, and if you pull that map up, Suzie, the key, I think, is to give us the ability to have an increase that will allow us to continue to fix lines and maintain our bond rating. And really, I think it's always helpful to have a good visual reference, and this is one of the best visual references we have, where you see blue on that map, aside from the lakes, are new water lines, and those, where you see the red dots are where we've had breaks. You notice those two red dots and blue lines don't typically coincide with each other because where we've fixed lines, we don't typically have breaks. And so I think that's just an important visual reminder of what putting in new lines can do for us as a community in ensuring that we have an effective delivery system to our residents, to our commercial businesses, and to our industrial businesses. I would reiterate again, this is not the perfect solution, but it's a solution we feel like takes into account all of the unique financial needs of the city and our customers. The one thing we did pass out tonight, which I think is worth spending a little bit of time on, because it really does, side-by-side comparison of the original city proposal versus what Councilmember Brown put forward at the last meeting. It's probably a bit confusing. We tried to make it as non-confusing as possible, but when you're dealing with a bunch of numbers and comparing them, it's not always easy to make it in understandable format, but in terms of, in terms of just walking through this sheet, you have at the top what our current rate is for various classes of residential users. So, 1,000 gallon user, 5,000 gallon, 7,500, 10,000 gallon, our current volume rate, our current meter charge, and then what a total bill is for those types of users. So, for example, just kind of read across, if you're a 5,000 gallon user, you pay 358 per thousand gallons, you pay a meter charge of $15, and your total bill right now is 2753. Moving down into sort of the next category or the next box of numbers at residential 2015, the original city... 2015, the original city proposal is 379 per 1,000 gallons, 983 is a meter charge. And so, a 5,000 gallon user would see a bill of 2878. The numbers below that are the numbers that were proposed by Councilman Brown. He kept the same meter charge, but used 375 per 1,000 gallons instead of 379. So, there you can see how that would impact that type of user on their average monthly bill. So, for example, for a 5,000 gallon user, which is our average residential user, instead of 2878, it would be 2858. You can see that essentially that four cents per 1,000 gallon makes a difference of 20 And then, that just sort of carries forward through 2016 and 2017 through those gallon usage categories. Then, moving over to the right-hand side of the sheet on the commercial users, that was important to kind of demonstrate what, a lot of the councils asked me, what's a, an average commercial user? There's really no such thing as an average commercial, commercial or residential user. But we picked out a small commercial user, a medium size, and then a large commercial user. So, for those categories, we chose 1,000 gallons because there's a number of 1,000 gallon commercial user. You know, those would be the small shops that probably just have bathroom, bathrooms in there and that's really the, all the water they use. A 415,000 gallon per month user would approximate to a big box store. And then, a 4 million gallon user would approximate to a hospital, for example. So, you can see how those rates currently are and then same sort of setup as with the residential customers. If you had, for example, looking at 2016, because 2015 is the same in the city and Councilman Brown's proposal, if you look at 2016, the 415,000 gallon user would pay 294 per 1,000 gallons, pay a meter charge of 6604 for a total bill of 128614. Under the numbers that Councilman Brown put forward, he suggested 296 per 1,000 instead of 294. That makes a difference of about $8 a month for a commercial user of that size. And then, finally, going to the bottom left-hand side of the sheet, detailing out what a large industrial customer would be looking at in terms of this, these numbers. A current large industrial user of 30 million gallons a month, right now, if they have multiple meters, in this particular example, they pay almost 68,000 a month. Under the city's proposed scenario of 239 per 1,000 gallons, the meter charges would increase by several hundred dollars and the total bill would rise to 72,000, almost 72,300. Again, if, under Councilman Brown's scenario, if you did a penny less per 1,000 gallons, you know, that equates to about $300 a month for that volume of user. And again, there's no, it's difficult to talk about an average industrial user because they're, as with commercial users, they're kind of all over the map in terms of what their monthly usage is. So, hopefully, this gives sort of a side-by-side comparison of those two proposals and where those might lead typical bill users on a typical month. With that, Mr. Mayor, I would stand for questions.
And council members, why don't, and in thinking of how we want to handle this and proceed, why don't we go first, if you have specific questions of this information, wanting additional or questions or anything, and then we'll go into, in a discussion. I know if some of you have specific proposals that you want to put out, that we could look at those and perhaps earlier rather than later so that we get the whole feel of everything that's coming before us. So, first, do we have questions, follow-up for Mr. Gerber? I think this is helpful. It just shows, and Mr. Brown, it shows the comparison between what your proposal was and how it looks with the different one. Primarily, it takes the residential down slightly and increases the commercial and industrial slightly to make a difference so that it still ends up creating the same amount of revenue. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to say thank you because I had asked for this kind of total bill approach and I really appreciate you doing it because it's very helpful to look. That's the question I would get from people is, what does that really mean when, you know, with this percentage or with the meter change or whatever, what is it really going to do to my actual bill? And this is very helpful, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Mr. Gerber, I liked, I see TJ's had the meter charge all the same, correct? For everybody?
That was my understanding from his proposal last time, is that the meter charge would remain the same, but the volume charge would be different.
Right. But yours, you had a little different approach and one of the things that we've seen, I thought the meter charge was a little bit different by the size of the meter?
Yes, I would, Mrs. Ortiz, I would suggest that both of those proposals have a meter charge based on the size of the meter.
Okay, but his is totally different, though, right?
No.
Oh, and the water, okay. All right. Okay. Just want to make sure I'm.
And it is confusing.
It is very confusing.
Because we're talking about two different rates.
Right.
There's a meter rate and a volume rate. And so, that's why we have to look at it two different ways, two different considerations, two different possibilities.
I just wanted to say I like the meter size and how it was charged per the meter size, if I'm correct. Now, I don't even know if I'm correct, Mr. Gerber.
You're right.
I think you have an understanding, yes.
Okay. I kind of like that because I think that's what people, you know, the question that I get is, am I getting charged the same meter size as the industrial guy? You know, and why? So, that's, I kind of like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On TJ, on your proposal, at the notes at the bottom, it says that the irrigation rate class could be considered for elimination in 2015 by merging into the residential class. Do we have a lot of irrigation in Topeka, in the city limits, and if so, how much is that generating?
I'll yield to Mr. Gerber for those technical details.
Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Everhart. I'm not sure how to.
Mrs. Schwartz.
Mrs. Schwartz, I'm sorry. I was too focused on my numbers. I'm not sure how to define a lot. Currently, for inside the city, we generate about three-quarters of a million dollars in irrigation. And bear in mind that with the irrigation category, it's not just irrigation like we might think of irrigating a field of soybeans or something. It's also commercial businesses that have large landscaping areas that they irrigate and so, they have separate meters for those so that that water usage does not get charged to their wastewater bill.
I could follow. Then, why would we move it into residential if it's more commercial?
You want to respond to that, Mr. Brown?
I guess that's back to me. Well, that was just a suggestion and I wasn't suggesting, I was just suggesting that as it would then be at the same rate as residential and that it could be eliminated as a category, there's only 453 users in that category.
Yeah, and one other item with that is, it is seasonal, which it makes a little bit of the difference in our making it available because it's more, you know, whatever, eight months a year or something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one of the things in terms of the rate that gets charged for irrigation class is it is, it is one of our more expensive classes to deliver water to because you have to have the infrastructure in place 12 months out of the year, but you only get usage of that infrastructure half to three-quarters of the time. So, it becomes more expensive for the city to deliver per volume of water.
And I assume that would include the golf courses, or whether, may or may not?
I don't know if golf courses are irrigated.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, ask the question. Not important. Other questions? Councilman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Doug, the, under our current ordinance and under the proposal, we differentiate between a base charge and a volume charge. The volume charge obviously reflects commodity use. The more water a customer uses, the higher they're going to pay for that increased usage. What does the base charge represent? Or stated a different way, what cost of service are we seeking to recover by that base charge?
Councilman Harmon and Mr. Mayor, we're seeking to just recover the city's base charges. So, the volume charge includes, includes the cost of production of water. The meter charge includes the cost of, typically, the cost of getting the infrastructure to get the water to from point A to point B. And associated, you know, it's a little hard to differentiate, Mr. Harmon, but in general, that's how I would differentiate, is the volume charge is a cost, that it costs the city to produce the water, whereas the meter charge is what it costs for us to get it there.
By, follow-up, Your Honor. So, by getting it there, you're talking about the transmission of that water from the water plant to the customer's tap?
Yes, I would generally define that as our distribution system, yes.
And then, then the volume charge then would reflect the purification cost, the, what we do, how we treat the water before it goes into the system to the customer?
Yes, generally, a plant versus distribution charge.
Okay. Can I ask another follow-up? So, under our current structure, the base charge, at least for a residential consumer, is the same, 15, $15 a month regardless of volume. And under the, under the proposal, the base charge varies according to meter size, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there a correlation between, between meter size and base charge under the proposal? In other words, moving.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Moving from a, from a flat base charge to a base charge that's differentiated based on meter size, what, is there, is there a cor-? I'm not trying to put you into a corner here, but is there a correlation between the meter size and the amount of the base charge? Or is it somewhat arbitrary?
The meter charges that are proposed going forward are part of, are reflective of, a piece of the cost of service study. And those rates were suggested by the cost of service study.
Is the size of the water line going in, right? Okay. Thank you. I may have additional questions, Your Honor?
All right. One, I, one area that we have, that we've stated a number of times, is we comment on the number of water main breaks and that certainly is perhaps the most important brings to our attention, that we need to spend more money and have to have a rate increase in order to do the things we need to get done. And I know I referenced this the last time we had this discussion. However, the amount, the additional funds being placed into the water main replacement program is not at all a major portion of the utility rate increase. And I think it'd be helpful for you to describe some of the other projects that we would be doing that are made, that will be made possible by the utility rate increase.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to defer that question to Mr. Whitaker.
Mr. Mayor, Council, you're talking in reference to what else besides the water main replacement. Obviously, that would, that's a portion of it. Other would be just upgrades to the plant that are required because of, it's in our, it would be the CIP program that we lined out. And in 15, I mean, there are also, besides water main replacements, there would be water main replacement due to breaks, there would be water main replacements that go along with street projects. You know, as long as we're tearing the streets up, we go ahead and replace those water lines under those streets that are under construction. Others would be just enhanced, when I say enhancements, just upgrades to the plant. Obviously, the equipment wears out as you, you know, it reaches its life cycle and we have to replace different procedures or equipment at the plant. That would all be included within those, you know, within that money as outlined in the CIP.
Okay. Yeah, because I see, I know the amount of the increase is, I think, about $2 to $3 million a year that we'll be receiving in additional funds with the utility rate increase. And in the CIP program, it shows we're increasing the amount spent to replace mains by 500,000. So, it's about 20, 25% is really going to replace the water mains. So, it's the other three fourths that I want to be, make sure the public understands that we're doing many other things besides just replacing water mains or upgrading our water mains. There are major, major projects that I assume, I know we had a brief description during the capital improvement, when we went over all the CIP projects. And so, there are some of those that then will be paid for by this, actually significantly, they will be paid for by this. And a small portion is going to replace water mains, or 20% or so is going to replace water mains.
There would be, we have the water main replacement program, you know, that we had set aside, you know, the $2 million, I think we usually identified every year. Yes, any increase in that would go towards that, but then, yes, there are the other projects, like you said, road projects that we've identified, water mains that need to be replaced, you know, that go along with that construction and then plant, pump upgrades, et cetera, throughout the distribution system, which would also work over into the wastewater side, too, with the rates there. Again, it's the plant equipment and in the distribution system primarily with the pump stations, et cetera, that we've got to keep those operational and they reach their life cycle and you have to replace sections of them or the entire facility depending on the, you know, the timeframe.
So, if we increase it by, if we increase the water main replacement program by 500,000 a year, how many more, I think, figures or how many more, is there a mile or two that we could really do with, replace the water mains?
I don't know whether Mr. Gerber has that exact number. I don't have that.
Or approximate.
So, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the, it kind of varies depending on the type of line we're looking to replace, whether it's a transmission or distribution line. But the figures I have here suggest that it costs about $1 million a mile for a transmission line and about 60% of that for a distribution line, 600,000.
Okay. And so, do you see that we would be replacing like a half-mile of water mains or just primarily working on replace, repairing the breaks?
This money that we were trying, that would be, the additional money coming in would be to go towards the replacement of lines. The breaks would be in our regular O and M portion of, you know, that we've already identified in the budget.
That's the $2 million.
Well, that's, no, well, in the operating budget or actually operating budget for the, you know, the utility, within that, our break expense is in that portion of the budget. This money is in the CIP would be going towards new line replacement.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Councilman Schmidt?
This question's for, probably for Doug Whitaker also.
Or you can just direct him to the city manager and he can choose. I think it's easier than if we start selecting who we want to answer the questions.
I was, I was. I was, I was just curious, what percentage, I think, I think in the last meeting, we were told we have about 800 miles total of water mains in the city. What percentage of those are the new, better plastic lines? Do we know that figure?
Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Schmidt, if I can just clarify the question, you're talking about what have we replaced up to this date or in our current system?
Correct.
Do you need Don for that? It's okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Rankin to step forward. But it appeared that Suzy had the answer, too.
Off the top of my head, the number, I think we've replaced approximately about 200, 200 miles out of the 851 miles of water main that we have.
Approximately a fourth, and I think maybe if that mapped, that looks about right of the blue. Mr. Schmidt, is that, you want to follow? Councilwoman Hiller?
Well, I have, I put a lot of thought into this, as you all know from last time. I want to, so I do have a proposal with me. I want to explain, or at least some discussion points. First of all, I want to thank Doug Gerber for all the time that he spent helping to sort out the handouts that they gave. I also got a set of estimated bills that were done based on Councilmember Brown's proposal. It showed the cities, what's current, and then what the cities was and Councilmember Brown's, and I don't know now, because, so it included the wastewater changes as well. And I don't know now whether I got them here at the council meeting or whether you gave them to me. If everybody got them, there was a set of 1,000 gallons, 4,200 gallons, and 10,000 gallons, and I found that very helpful. What I remembered was the staff telling us that from the first time they gave us the proposal, months ago, whatever that was, to the current one, that they shaved the dollars a little bit just to ease that rate increase. And then the citizens asked a lot of questions. So the drivers for me to spend more time was the citizens wanted to know that we've done our due diligence and that we're not basically robbing the utilities, and it was important to me to be able to confirm that. But I also don't want to do this again, so if at all possible, I wanted to see if we could get enough money into the utility balances or revenue or reduce expenses so that we would be a little closer to being able to do all the maintenance and do those line replacements both, rather than have to choose. So I've got a set of just four things to consider for right now. I'm open for discussion on them, but I will explain where I was coming from and what's on those sheets when they get around. First, in terms of the rates themselves, after a lot of thought, and you know that I've asked some questions before, I've overall gotten comfortable with the staff's 6%, 5%, 5% recommendation, the basic recommendation that we are working with. However, it was fascinating to me to look at the comparison ones with the Councilmember Brown and Mr. Gerber had created, and I double-checked whether those are accurate. Because what they show is that in a number of cases, the people's rates would be lower than they are today. So running some rough numbers under the rates, I said I would consider using, supporting the staff's recommendation, but with discussion of a couple of changes. The first one being to adjust all the rates so that none actually fall below the 2014 rate that we have today. And in rough numbers, that would add about $140,000 over the three years in revenue. You may think that's important, you may not, but it would generate about another $140,000. If we raised the commercial to the multifamily rate on the staff's chart, it could generate over $1 million over the three years. Now, there's a note that you see on my chart, there's a couple of really, obviously, some really big users from what we got showed today. And if those are hospitals, and for instance, and we don't want to raise the rates on those, and there was a possibility of converting them to industrial, that would take a little bit off, off the volume of new money generated through commercial, but it would still, I think, generate another $800,000 over the three years. Again, just matching commercial to the multifamily rates. With the other suggestions that have been brought up, for instance, the editorial today about higher rates outside the city, this plan that the staff gave us really jumps the rates outside the city, and so not sure we would want to consider going any higher than that. They're pretty big jumps. I could be okay with my colleague, Mr. Brown's slight upticks in the industrial rates, but I know that staff negotiated and that they did come to terms on those. I'm okay with leaving them where they are. But those two changes would give us another $1 million in revenue in the current rate plan. The second suggestion I have to get more money into the system, for those of us that were on the council in 2013, when the utility bonds were refinanced, there was a kind of complicated decision to, of course, put the revenue from those bonds into the utility, but then we voted to raise the pilots and the administrative fees, and basically to take $1 million out of the bond proceeds and pretty much immediately have that forwarded into the general fund. At this point, we have improved the general fund status as well as the operating budget for our operating fund, and I would suggest that we could transfer that $1 million back into the utility and still be okay with our fund balance on the operating fund side. And the third suggestion there, again, that's $1 million that would go into the fund balance would be available whenever. Related, and number three, related to those same pilots and administrative fees, Mr. Gerber gave me this information, but then if you look at your budget book for this year and you look at how much we were budgeted, or how much we actually collected in pilots and administrative fees in 2012, and then you look at the 2015 budget, between water and wastewater, those totals go up by 2.3 million in the last three years that we were transferring out of the utilities into the operating fund. I think we could handle reducing that transfer by $1 million. We would still be doing far more than we were in 2012. I think the operating budget can handle it without affecting personnel or programs. That would be $1 million a year that would stay in the utility instead of being transferred over to the general fund. The total of those three, then, would be $5 million more for utilities. I personally feel strongly that, A, we can do it without hurting anything, and B, it would really help the utilities who desperately need that money. Again, I don't want to come back on this, and I want to see the replacement and the repairs happening at the same time. The fourth item I put on there, because there was some discussion before about raising the amount of money for subsidizing our poorest rate payers. If, in fact, we're going to be able to maintain our minimum rates for them, we arguably don't need to do that. Nonetheless, it's probably a really good time to refer that whole issue to the Community and Economic Development Committee to review the rate issues, and at the same time, review the three different sources of money that we have available to provide some assistance to low-income people who are having trouble making their utility bill payments, and see if there's some ways we think we could streamline that. So I would certainly encourage that we do that. Again, it shouldn't require any additional money, it would just make it a little, we could see if there's ways to streamline getting the money to the people who need it. Other possible savings and offsets, which are listed at the bottom of that page, the things at the top of the page, we could all vote on next week and get done as part of our package. Other opportunities might be to, as the staff has said they're doing, continue looking at staffing and economies in the utilities, see about whether there's some economies of delivery of service, of costs, of staff. We did talk last time that the staff numbers had grown substantially even in a year, so just to make sure that's all needed. Second suggestion, I think I've made it before, but if we were able to get the county to agree that the leftover money from the county-wide half-cent sales tax at the end of 2016, it's expected to be at least $6 million, maybe 10, but if we could take 1.9 million of that to do the retrofit on the River Weir, which is both a safety as well as a recreational expense, 1.9 million would do that. We could do it in 2017 and be on our way. And then, $4.1 million out of that six, if they were willing to let, to share that with us, that would be the half of our levy repair match money that we don't have yet, and the two of them together would help us offset $6 million in expenses out of stormwater utility, just leveraging the money and making the funds that we have go a little farther. And last, if we could find other sources, JDO or other sources to help with some of those expansion expenses that we do have in water, wastewater and stormwater for the far south part of our city, it could help alleviate that cost to the funds. So I'm open to questions or discussion on any of those.
Council members, do you have questions, comments, reactions, thoughts to the proposals by Mrs. Hiller?